Oh, that's right, Joe Fournette is up there.
Yeah.
What's going on here? More.
Looks like he got that one.
Yeah.
Oh.
I got rules of procedure.
I just said that like thirty seconds ago.
Da-da-da. Yeah.
Are those just sitting there when you got?
This is rules and procedures. Is this different than the memo we got in our email?
Yes. All of this is new information. This is all that, all the materials we have.
Oh, new information. Okay.
So for the planning commission members online and the planning commission members here, we have some additional documents that we just received today. So we emailed them to the planning commissioners and the ones and the planning commission members that are here, you have received them on your dais already. So for those planning commission members at home, you can check your email and there's the rules of procedure, a comment letter from the applicant on the bucko rezone, and a comment letter from a local developer on the bucko rezone.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the meeting to attendance. It's six thirty-four on Tuesday, eleven sixteen. Can we stand for the or sit for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So roll call. We have Commissioners Freiberger, Fatizzi, Johnson, Penno, Mannix, and Commissioner Fournette present. Is that correct, everybody? Okay. So we have Commissioner Huggins who is absent. So has everybody had the opportunity to look at the meeting minutes from the prior meeting? I would like comments.
I had a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
So the meeting adjournment time was, is shown here as eight twenty-four PM, but it was stated in the recording to be nine fourteen PM.
It was, it was only a late meeting, so.
And I am looking for the other one.
Danielle, just give me a minute to pull it up. So if we have a dispute on when it began or ended, I'm not too sure, John, what the protocol for that is.
This is Nikki. I would move to amend the minutes to reflect the correct time.
Okay. Thanks, Nikki. I'm glad to hear, by the way. So if somebody wants to make that recommendation, I'm open to it.
I did have one other, more of a question on clarification. So I don't know if that's appropriate to point out now, or?
Go ahead.
Okay, so under the second rezone request, bucko, paragraph two, the second sentence, she disagreed with the staff analysis of how the change from R-15 zone as in the mixed commercial. I'm not sure what that's trying to say there.
Danielle, what page are you on? On the second page? Because there was, yeah, you know. We're gonna revisit it again tonight anyway, so.
It's page?
Three?
It's under section two. I don't know. It's, there's not really a page.
Section two, page two.
Well, there's not really pages, but, okay.
Okay, so we have page two. So do we have a disagreement what was said, or?
It's just syntax.
Okay, so it's syntactical thing, so we can correct that. And Danielle, thank you, by the way. You know, details matter.
I think it just should read, she disagreed with the staff analysis of how the change from R-15 zone to mixed commercial.
Okay.
Okay.
It wasn't trying to say anything besides, you know, she disagreed.
Yeah.
With the analysis.
So we have some updates clearly to the, to the meeting minutes.
And does, does yours at the top say September nineteenth?
Yes.
It does.
It'd be October.
So I would recommend just not taking action on the minutes and asking for those clerical updates, and then you can approve the minutes at the next meeting.
Thank you, Nikki.
So can somebody just say what Nikki just said? Before, before we move forward into any of this.
I would recommend not taking action on the October nineteen, twenty, twenty-one minutes tonight, but at the next meeting.
Okay, so I guess is that a motion? And does somebody want to second that motion?
Point of clarification, would that be just a motion to table till the next meeting?
I guess so.
Okay. I second the motion to table.
It's a motion to table. Yeah, yeah. I've never seen that before, but anyway, I'm good with that.
For clarification, it's actually a motion to postpone to a date certain. Table means to take it off the table.
Okay. So what would your recommended language be, since this is all gonna be on the public record?
My recommendation would be a motion to postpone approval of the minutes until the next meeting, which the date I don't have right in front of me.
Okay, so can somebody please make a motion and we'll move on?
So moved.
Okay, so moved. There you go. Okay, it's seconded. So we will now move on to the, the public hearing portion of our business. And is there anyone in the audience, present or online that has anything on the general public comments side? Oh, I apologize. I open up the general public comments side at six forty-one. And do I have anyone in the audience that would like to say anything? Okay, general public comments is now closed at six forty-two.
So Joe, to clarify, the general public comment period is for things that are not on the agenda. So if you're here to speak to anything that is on the public hearing, that's scheduled for the public hearing, such as the bucko rezone or the Ruby rezone.
No, no, no. John, again, I'm just reading off the agenda right here. So I'm just going off, and you're right, the regular, I just went off the general public comments, opened, closed. And would you like to introduce the public hearing?
Yes.
Portion as we move forward.
So.
How about it?
Right, so we're, before we quite jump into the public hearing part of this, wanted to acknowledge that there was a little, the procedures at the last meeting didn't go as we typically hoped. So to provide it to the planning commission today is a draft rules of procedure for the Cedar Valley Planning Commission meeting. And so what this includes is information about how the meeting is, how a planning commission meeting is to be run. So we put this together to address such things as planning commission attendance and how the agenda is prepared, the general public comment period, how the meeting is run, and public hearing procedures specifically. So we wanted to bring this document for the planning commission to review today. And we, we would like to take action on this at the next planning commission meeting, if that's what I understood our city attorney to want us to do. But, you know, before we get into the public hearing part, and since we haven't had a chance to fully go over these rules of procedure, wanted to lay out what the general, what the public hearing procedures are so we're able to go forward with the public hearings a little smoother this time. So I'll just read this off for the benefit of those that don't have it right in front of them. For the public hearing procedures part of this document, it says, "The chairperson shall open the public hearing on the subject case by identifying the proposal." "The chairperson shall state that the testimony and input will be taken in a prescribed fashion. All persons wishing to speak on the matter before the planning commission must first be recognized by the chairperson. For the record, that person will state his or her name and address and as well as any group or organization he or she represents, if any. All statements by the speaker shall be addressed to the planning commission. The chairperson may limit the amount of time allowed any person or group in order to give all who wish the opportunity time to speak. Chairperson may limit input to avoid duplication. Because public hearings are to gather information, there will be no cross-examination of speakers. The presentation order shall be as follows. Staff planner, presentation of, of staff report and any other materials or correspondences into the record. And then followed by the proponent, the proponent's presentation and statements by representatives of the proponent or applicant. And then the chair will open the public hearing. And following that, then members of the public are allowed to speak. Presentations and statements by the public who wish to speak for or against the proposal or application. The hearing is to gather information. Questions from the public are not answered at the public hearing. Questions about the proposal or application shall be addressed to staff during regular city hall business hours or in writing to the planning and building department. The public testimony portion of the public hearing is then closed. Planning commissioners then deliberate on the proposal or application and testimony received. Members may ask questions of both staff and any other speakers to clarify their understanding of relevant points or to gather additional information. All questions shall be posed through the chairperson, who shall ask the appropriate party for answers. The motion, a motion for disposition may then be made. Motion may be to continue the hearing, to gather more information, to recommend approval, approval with conditions, denial of the proposal or application, or forward to the city council with no recommendation. The planning commission actions shall be transmitted to the city council in writing shall include the recommendation, findings of fact, the planning staff report, other correspondences, if any, and a summary of testimony presented to the planning commission. So that is the, that's the process we're going to follow for this public hearing. And we can have more discussion about these rules and procedures at the next planning commission meeting. But those are pretty standard. There's nothing really to debate about those. So just wanted to put those procedures out there for everybody to understand how we're going to operate today. So with that, I think we're ready for the, the chair to do his duty at this point.
Again, it's my show, no worries. So we're gonna open up the public hearing, meeting of CPA dash one dash two-one dash two oh two-one, comprehensive plan amendments, including two rezone requests. And we're going to start with rezone request number two zero two zero zero one two. Ruby requests to change the designation of roughly three acres of land from mixed commercial use to residential five. Meeting's open, six fifty-eight, six forty-eight.
Okay. So thank you.
Point of order. We aren't, we aren't actually going to open the public hearing on each individual matter until after the staff presentation. Then you open the public hearing.
That, that, that's fine. John, it's your show. Thank you.
Okay, so this is not the first time the planning commission has heard, had a public hearing on this issue. We have had several, this is a holdover from 2020, as I described at the last planning commission meeting. And the city council asked the planning commission to re-review it and make, make a stronger documentation of the process and provide a recommendation to the city council to, to consider in 2021. The last council, at the last planning commission hearing, we heard from several members of the public. They did include that, the information of the, that those persons presented in the staff report, although very briefly, there, it is read into the, the public record and is available in the meeting minutes and in audio form on our website. So this project is a request to change three acres of mixed commercial land to residential five. The surrounding properties are also residential five. The three acre area is the, roughly the driving range and office part of, and parking lot part of the golf course off of North Fruitdale Road. It includes the three acres from Portobello Road south to the, the gas line and east of the creek to North Fruitdale Road. And that is the three acre area, as shown on the map in a couple of places on the memo. I think I, staff's presented on this enough times that I'm concerned about rehashing a lot of the information. I'll just go over our staff conclusions is that the surrounding land uses are characterized as residential and regional county park to the east. The, there's a tributary to Brickyard Creek that borders it on the west and has, requires a hundred and ten foot buffer from the ordinary high watermark. So that takes up a fair amount of part of this property, but it may be mitigated down to fifty-five feet through restoration plantings as part of a development. To an extent, the commercial uses are incompatible with residential zoning. However, the scale of any commercial use on a three acre parcel would likely have limited impact on the surrounding residential uses. The, long and short of this is, you know, this, this is mixed commercial land. It would be fairly limited commercial in scale based on the, the surrounding area and what would be necessary there. So you're not gonna get a Walmart on something like this. It would be something more like a local convenience store or possibly a gas station, however, gas station seems very unlikely in this area. So it's fairly limited by the critical areas nearby. And we've received a lot of testimony about just the, the golf course in general receiving a lot of rain, which of course, on a week where we've received over six inches of rain in a few days, that's fresh on everybody's mind. The question is, do we rezone, what is the best use for those three acres? So staff finds that the, you know, our comp plan has designated this as commercial land for a purpose. It was thought out when it was put as commercial land. And staff is not, not, does not recommend lightly to change mixed commercial land to residential land. We have in our comprehensive plan a balance of required amount of residential land to accommodate our projected twenty-year population growth. We see that our population growth is not exceeding by any significance our, our twenty-year land capacity for residential lands. And further, when we consider where do we put commercial land if we remove commercial land is very difficult. If this process is not proposing to put any additional commercial land someplace else, it would just be strictly losing commercial land. So staff is not recommended that this rezone be approved for the reasons stated. And that there's some procedural, you know, information in here, like how many hearings we've had and the timelines throughout this document. But we have not received any additional information as part of the public hearing process, the public notification process, I apologize. Last week and a half ago, we posted notice on the website. We posted notice on the site in two different places of this public hearing. And we put it in the newspaper and mailed to every, all the property owners and residents within five hundred feet to make them aware of this action and this hearing. We've heard this several, we've heard this issue several times now. So staff is encouraging that we, if the planning commission is prepared and has enough information, make a, make their recommendation to the council after today's hearing. So with that, staff is done with our presentation. So per the rules and procedure, you may now open the, you may now ask the proponent to give a presentation if they would like.
John, thank you. You guys put so much work into so many different things and it's absolutely appreciated. So we're gonna open up the meeting right now to the proponent. As well as after the proponent is concluded, we'll open it up to the general public. Nikki, do you concur with that?
Yes, it's the proponent's turn to explain the reason for the application. And then after the proponent speaks, you open it up for public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Ruby, are you there?
I'm here.
How about it?
Thank you. Can I be heard?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
You have, you have the floor.
I'll speak loudly.
Please do that.
Good evening. I'm Bob Ruby, eight oh one Metcalf Street, Cedar Valley. I'm a member of Granite Holdings, which is entitled and owns the property there. This has been before you, several times before. There's been a lot of lively discussion on it. Mr. Coleman, going back to the beginning, made a great staff report on it, findings of, of fact. I'm, I, I know that's included in the information I have, together with all of his explanations. As the third time, there are, there have been a, at least several and perhaps a number of, of issues, not the least of which is purpose and use of the property. That's, that's been discussed on the, the various trips, pros and cons of that. Separate from this request, there is a development application on the, the parcels, the, the property surrounding this. South of Portobello, basically west of Fruitdale Road. It's in the city. That is zoned R-five. So on, all but the surrounding area, including that property to the north, is zoned residential and has residential in it. To the east, of course, is the Northern State property. The application has been accepted. It, it's for residential development. That is in process. What I'd like to encourage the commission to look at and focus here on is the criteria related to, and make their decision based on the specific part of the rezone, including that criteria. So this application is not about development. It, it's a straight-up request for a rezone on three, approximately three acres of property out there. That being said, it's not about development or not development. The, what rights accrue on either case are, would be there. Other things that will not change directly as a result of this are issues on critical areas, flooding, environmental, civil engineering, buffers and things like that. Under each scenario, were it to remain commercial or whether it is changed to residential, those criteria will have to be gone through, met, and overcome anyway. So no change there. The intention is to develop the, the property. I am a private, for-profit developer, and I need to make a living. I make no apologies about that. I encourage you, I implore you as a group to look at this from the, the direct standpoint for consideration in making the change. And that is really, should the zoning be changed from what it is now to what is being requested? In the same way that I would encourage the group to look at any other change. And secondly, is there any disadvantage? I'm asking, I'm, I'm requesting that you find no disadvantage, that being the case, in, in a straight-up rezone. Inasmuch as it does match the surrounding area vicinity and that is R-five, and that was what the request would be. So that concludes my remarks. If, if there's any questions from the commission, I'd be happy to answer those, respond.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ruby? Again, I'm at a disadvantage because I'm on a screen here. Commissioner Fournette, Freiberger, anyone?
Just a point of order, Joe. I think that we're supposed to save our questions till after we hear from the public for every, the way that I'm reading this procedure.
Nikki, Nikki's here, so it should be the one that.
So I'm, I'm not bothered by that one either way. Either way, you're gonna be asking the questions. But the way that we have the rules drafted, it does say wait until after. Because I had an opportunity to comment.
That, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Ruby. So it's gonna, now, we're gonna open up the meeting to the general public. And I'm not too sure who's in the audience or who's online. So Bill, you're, you're, you're gonna need to be in control of this. If we have participants online, if we do have participants online, just please introduce yourself, your name, address, and that, that's pretty much it.
Joe, this is Bill Chambers. Just, just so you know, each individual participant can unmute themselves and.
Okay.
Just a second, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can't hear.
Bill, you're going to need to be the monitor here because, like I said, everything from where I'm sitting right now, it's like I can't tell.
Can you hear us? Hello?
Barely. I can hear a person, yes. Hi.
Yes, hello. This is Rick Judd at 1310 Fruitdale Road, just above the golf course. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. I've, I've listened to Mr. Ruby's speech, and we've heard it in 30 years several times before of changing the use of this thing from a golf course previously that was a cow pasture and a holding area for thousands of gallons of water. The area just last week, I hope somebody had a chance to take a drive, just, excuse me, this week, to take a drive by and see how much water actually gets on there in a, in a rain event of which we will probably have many more just like it. And if it's possible to possibly channel it off, but where do you put it? Water doesn't run uphill. There's going to be huge amounts of houses on up the hill with the final phases of the development that's over the hill and stuff. More water coming down off of that, into that same area. And the only place it can go is into the Brickyard Creek and on down the road. So where and when all that water starts down there, there's going to be some real problems. And that's why I'm not for more housing. We're going to have plenty of housing around here. You can see them going up like crazy. So let's just try and keep it like a golf course, Mr. Ruby, please. And that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you.
This is Ian Stevens. Do I get to go next?
Absolutely. Okay. So I would, you know, concur with the statements. I guess one question that I had was this is a rezon. It looks like a change from mixed commercial to just residential now? Because the last one was talking about mixed commercial. And now it's changing, they want to change it to residential, I guess they call it five. So that would be all houses, right? Mrs. Stevens, I believe the proposal is to change it from mixed commercial, which still has a residential component, by the way, to, I believe, an R7.
It's R5, residential, five units per acre.
So it's five. So you would have five units per acre. And that, that's what the proposal is. Okay. So because see, before, I think it said mixed commercial, and now they're changing, they want to change it to R5 or residential, where it's just going to be houses, not anything else? Correct. Yes. Okay, all right. And then my wife is here, and she would like to comment.
Yes, I would like to say that I would make it a neighborhood park, but we don't, don't even, sorry. But I'm concerned about how this affects our neighborhood.
So we can't, we cannot hear you in?
We live above the golf course on Fruitdale, and I'm concerned about how this affects our neighborhood. I'm surprised if Mr. Judd saw that. And if it were to me, I'd make it into a neighborhood park. So, um, that's really, I'm sure maybe how also be an important one in the.
We're still having a hard time hearing you. If you could speak directly into your microphone, that would be helpful.
Basically, what she's saying is that she'd rather, you know, I think everybody would like to see it developed some other way, like a city park or something like that, which I don't think, because, you know, I don't think that's going to happen. But I think that the concern is, as the Mr. Judd concern, and many of the other people speaking the last time talked about the same thing, you know, and it's not just because of the water event that we've had this week. We're talking about all of the time, this happens every year, is that how are you going to mitigate all of that water on the golf course, you know? And, and, you know, sure, it dries up in the summer, but boy, every, every winter, we have the same thing happen. You know, you look at the houses across the way, off of Highway 20, where they've got, they've got it closed now, and those buildings are underwater. How are you going to prevent from that, from happening, happening on the golf course? I don't see how you're going to mitigate that. Mr. Stevens, this is not about the golf course. Okay? This is simply a rezon. Go, go ahead, John. People are getting confused, I think, of two different things. This is not about the golf course.
Okay. It's okay to, to let them speak.
Just a point of order, though, for the commissioner, for the chairman. I do believe that we have the ability to limit public comment to the matter at hand, which is separate from the issue of water mitigation. We've heard countless public comments about water mitigation, which is irrelevant to the question facing the council or the planning commission currently. We are debating whether the property should be zoned mixed commercial or residential five. And I would just comment to the, to the public that mixed commercial allows buildings five stories tall. It could be a gas station, it could be, I mean, all sorts of different things. As it's currently zoned, Mr. Ruby would be legally entitled to build under the mixed commercial zoning guidelines there.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Thank you. So I would like to move on to the next individual that would like to testify or?
I'd like to testify. My hands up.
There you go. Are you Terry?
I'm Paul Cock.
Oh, Paul, I'm sorry. All I can see is things on a screen. I can't see your name or anything. So please introduce yourself, name, address, phone, the whole nine yards, you got it.
Sure. My name is Paul Cock. My wife and I live at 975 Wedmore Place, which is about a block from the golf course. I was a little concerned that there was no public comment mentioned on this because I sent in a public comment with a ton of photos to Nikki this afternoon. Maybe, I'm just, did you get it, Nikki?
I have no idea myself.
So, you know, it should be directed to staff so I can get it to the planning commission. So as in the public notice, it states to send to the planning department.
Okay. And then in terms of the, the three-acre zone, I am opposed to it. I kind of disagree with the, respectfully disagree with the assertion that this has nothing to do with water mitigation because it kind of does. It's, if they're going to put residential there, then they'll put residential on the other part of the golf course. It sounds like it's part of the plan, but, you know, I'll sort of limit my comments. The, in those pictures that I sent, and this is again why I think the water mitigation is an issue, there was an enormous pond, which was right in the middle where that three acres is. I'm not entirely sure of that. I'd have to look at the diagram. But, you know, for the past, it's just, you know, Mr. Judd talked about how this previously was a cow pasture. And, you know, I, I'm, I am going to mention the flooding because we've lived here for over 20 years and, you know, may have rained six inches recently, but we, we see it flood every year. And the pictures I sent in show significant ponds of water on the golf course. Across the street, the wetlands turned into a lake. So again, the issue is even if you develop further at the three acres, where does the water go? I also had a question. Prior efforts to develop the golf course over the years, as Mr. Judd said, for over 30 years were, were rejected as officials each time prudently, I think had historic knowledge that the golf course floods. The last thing I wanted to mention was the issue of, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Oh, yeah. So another one of the photos I sent shows standing water on Wedmore Place where we live, further development of the golf course and even the three acres. Both Wedmore and Culkin Streaks are at a lower elevation than the golf course. Flooding the golf course ends up on Brickyard Creek. As flooding increases because of the development, that'll flow down to Wedmore and Culkin Streaks negatively infecting our safety, quality of life and property values. And that's all I've got. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. So again, I'm at a disadvantage here since I'm on a screen staring at myself. Is there anyone else, Bill, that we know that is online right now that would like to testify? Or is there anyone else in the, in the audience in general?
Yeah, this is Tim Woodmancy. I'd like to say something real quick. Tim Woodmancy, BYK Construction, 702 Metcalf Street. I think that a lot of the comments that are being made from the neighbors are more a civil engineer, you know, concern over a zoning concern. You know, that's, that's more of a complaint that I would think would be heard at a preliminary plat, you know, hearing. I'm in support of, of changing the zoning. I think the city needs more housing. The mixed commercial, as it sits, it, it appears to me that it was originally zoned mixed commercial to kind of, to coexist with what was there with the golf course. So I think that's why it was zoned mixed commercial in the first place. I think it's fully surrounded by residential, and it's not a good place for a commercial development. If Mr. Ruby goes on and develops all the property around it, it'll just be a vacant piece of land sitting there, no longer running as a golf course. And so those are, those are the reasons why I, I support the rezon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience or online? I'm going to take that as a no.
Are you?
We do have people in the audience here. We're, if there's not anybody else online, when we're done with online people, then we can move on to the people in the audience.
Yeah. John, you gotta, you gotta help us with that because we're not there. So if you could monitor that.
So if there, if there's anybody else online that would like to speak on, on this, the rezon, Ruby rezon online, let us know now. And if there's no more, then we'll move on to the people in the, in the building.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
I believe we can. This Terry?
Yeah, this is Terry, 1310 North Fruitdale. I just want to say that I'm opposed to the zone change in that three acres. And that's it. I just want you to know that I'm against it. And I won't talk, I won't talk about water because everybody's already done that.
It's important that people feel that they can participate in the overall plan of what happens, that you do have a say. So anyway, do we have anyone else online? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
So, so John, it's going to be up to you right now in-house. I don't believe we have anybody else.
Yep. Okay. So we'll bring up the first person from the audience today in the building.
Am I allowed to drop this to speak? My mask appear, no. My name is Suzie Williams. I live at 1058 Wedmore Place. I've lived there for 50 years. And I have to disagree with the water mitigation cannot be part of this rezoning because it's just, it's, it's a fact. I lived through the 75 flood, the 90 flood, the 2003 flood. We've had water in our property without that golf course being developed. And I also have a question. Am I understand that Mr. Rudy, Ruby wants to change this to mixed commercial or?
It's currently mixed commercial and he's.
Or seven, he wants to.
It's currently mixed commercial and he wants to change it to residential five, which is roughly five units per acre.
I've submitted documents and documents and documents. And I would also like to add that Mr. Ruby is the third developer that we've been through this disagreement with on the development of that golf course. And I would also like to point out that no other city council or planning commission has ever allowed it to happen because of what happens out there and the amount of water. And other than that, I have no, I said on the planning commission myself, I have no objection to land development and encourage land development. But I'm strictly against irresponsible developments without the regard to the damage that they can do to other people. The development up that we saw in the 2003 flood, and if anybody wants to go through mountains of videos and photographs over the years, then it's consistent. Every 15 to 20 years, we have a major flood. And that golf course and that creek, they spew over. And with the development, I just watched them put in the development down the road, which is a very nice development across from Independence Lane. And I couldn't even count the amount of dump trucks that went by the house every day to build that land up so they could develop it. Now, nobody's going to be, tell me that engineering or however you're going to do it, that land is going to be built up at the golf course because it's just so low everywhere and it's a swamp. And the gentleman was right. It turned into a, it turns into a lake every year. We're not done this year. Had it, I guarantee you, and I have made plenty of photos of the last week, had we reached the level that they expected for it to crest at 41 feet in Mount Vernon, which thank God didn't happen, we would have had water without a development on that property. And I really object to that the water mitigation and those issues are different from the rezoning because the whole purpose of the rezon is to develop the property. And my question has been the same for 50 years. What are you going to do to control that water if you allow a developer to come in and fill that land and put houses on it? After the Sauk Mountain View development was put up on the hill, Independence Lane, for the first time ever in its history, flooded out. And it was flooded almost right up level to Macargill Road. And there were houses there sitting underwater that had never happened previous to Sauk Mountain View escapes being built. And it's the only, only lot of land and acreage in Cedar Woolley that we've ever opposed because of that. In 90, where Janicki sits, his, that entire place was underwater, three feet of water. I'm not just talking inches of water or a foot of water. Mr. Ruby, three days ago, had very deep water right in the area that he's talking about, that three acres where the clubhouse and the barns sits. And I've just, I've submitted letters and documents and letters when he first put it in. And I just wanted to, but somewhere at the. And I just wanted to, but somewhere at the, I don't, I don't know. I thought, has he requested for a?
Ma'am, ma'am, you know. I appreciate everybody's comments here. However, what we're talking about here is a rezone. We're not talking about the golf course. We're not talking about the specifics of what's happening there as far as, uh, you know, water and, and things like that. Mr. Ruby has simply presented that he wants to do a rezone from a mixed commercial, which by the way, has a significant residential component to it. Okay? And he just wants to bring it down to a single family. So we're, we're not talking about the golf course. Everybody's getting kind of a little bit off task. And I don't want to interrupt people, but I'd also like to move things along whereby we, we stay focused on, on, on what the, what the objective is right now. And it's simply a rezone. Okay? From a mixed commercial that again, has a significant residential portion to it. Okay? And they just wanna bring it down to a single family R5. So if, if you can conclude or you have anything more to add, uh, go ahead. I don't want to be disrespectful, but I also want to keep everybody on task as well.
I understand. I understand that. But you can't eliminate the golf course because it's the clubhouse and the driving range sits on that water that he wants rezoned. I would also add to other public opinion and now end is that, that land, especially with all the development and apartments and, uh, development going on around the city, which is great, but I would recommend the best use of that property ever would be to turn it into a public park. And I would be willing to work my heart out to help earn the money or write grants to get the money to purchase that land. And that's it.
Thank you. So John, do we have anybody else, uh, in-house that would like to, uh, have anything to say?
No, there's, there's no other members of the public here.
Okay. So at this point, I'm gonna close the, is that correct? That I'm gonna close the public portion and open it up to a discussion for the planning commission. Again, I, I can't see people, so feel free to jump on it.
I have a, a question for staff. Do you know, uh, if there is a different, or what the lot coverage sort of difference is between the mixed commercial zone and, um, the R5 zone? Like, in my.
Are, are you, are you referring to like?
Impervious surfaces?
So, um, lot coverage in the mixed commercial zone is, is not limited. So, you know, besides probably 25% landscaping or 15% landscaping, which would likely be, you know, impervious, would, I'm sorry, be pervious areas, whereas the rest could be impervious. In the R5 zone, there's not really a limit to the pervious, the impervious pavement amounts required, uh, or allowed. But, um, the building coverage is limited to 50% of, or I'm sorry, 35% of the lot. But that doesn't include driveways and, and porches and gravel parking areas.
From my experience in residential development, there are significant limitations on allowable per, impervious surfaces on a lot. Or is that not the case in the R5 zone?
Not particular, not, not, there's no strict zoning, uh, difference, uh, limits on, on the R5, no.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Um, an issue of concern that I've had with this, um, from the beginning that hasn't been satisfied is the fact that if we're gonna lose this mixed commercial zoning, we have to make it up somewhere. And the entire time I've been on the planning commission, that has been less than a easy, um, subject, not for planning commission, not for staff, and not for, uh, community members. It's often a point of angst and division. And so, you know, I, there's no alternative that's been presented with losing that. I know that we don't have a ton of it, so there's not like a, there's a lot of wiggle room that we can, you know, give away without actually having to make it up somewhere else. And so that's a point of concern of mine that just really has not been addressed and, and kind of, kind of withholds my, my support of this.
Commissioner Fournette, I can, I can see you on the screen. Would you like to add anything to this, Joseph?
Uh, no, but Eric brings up a real good point. And, uh, I remember back many times that this, uh, subject came up. And just like he said, we had to talk a lot about where are we gonna make it up? And, uh, not sure how to address that at this point.
Anyone else?
I'm also gonna agree with Eric on that, um, we, we need the mixed commercial. I know, I just, it, it, it's hard for me because it's like, what can they put up there is mixed commercial? But there's so much residential now, I could see, you know, he needs a little services, even a little just handy mart or, you know, a sandwich shop. I'm sure you got enough houses up there already that the people there could use those. Yeah, I just, the, the mixed commercial part bothers me.
You, you know, at the end of the day though, our mixed commercial zone does allow for residential uses as well. So it's, it's not like, uh, and I guess this was my point from the beginning. It's kind of like, you, you're really not losing anything. But, uh, it seems like the, uh, public right now is just really concerned about water. That really doesn't have anything to do with this particular rezone. However, you know, their voices are heard. And I, I, I do believe that's important. So at this particular point, right? So, does somebody, it, it's up to the mayor and council to decide whether they rezone or not. All we are is an advisory group. And I kind of hear in, if I'm reading between the tea leaves here, that we're not in favor of, uh, a rezone to an R5 unless somebody, you know, speak up. Okay? And leaving it in the zone that it's currently in. So, uh, I'm gonna throw that out on the table right now as to, uh, would somebody like to make a recommendation as to what we believe it should or should not be? And, and I put it up to a vote before I move it up the, uh.
Joe, I've got a couple of other questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. You can, absolutely. Have at it.
This is a question for staff. Are we allowed to make a recommendation beyond the request that's currently e- either approving or denying the request that is currently on the table?
Well, uh, so the applicants requested something specific. So the, you know, the, the request is, can it be R5? So the, so the motion should really be based around, does the planning commission recommend that it become R5? Or, you know, that, that, that's, that's the request.
And are we allowed to recommend, uh, adopting that, but add stipulations? Like, can we, um, and I, you know, I don't know exactly what they would be at this point, but I, I'm just out of curiosity, what is our ability to sort of add caveats or stipulations to this?
Well, there's not a whole lot of caveats or stipulations to, uh, the R5 zone. So, um, I mean, if you were to say, you know, uh, can be R5 zone, but not allow certain uses or something like that, what you, that would be doing is creating a different type of zoning. So that, that wouldn't be something that you would be allowed.
Sure. Okay. So, uh, for the record, I, um, still find myself in favor of this rezone request. I believe that, uh, I, I have no comment on whether the water issues can or cannot be addressed. I do believe that the allocations of mixed commercial and residential that have happened under our comprehensive plan, were done at a time before our current housing crisis. And I understand there may be some hesitation to, uh, make rash decisions, uh, in a time of crisis. But I do believe that, uh, more varied, uh, types and allowances for housing within the urban growth area is the most important way that we could be directing our zoning decisions. Cedar Woolley has plenty of mixed commercial land currently. And we've heard testimony from multiple developers and various people that, uh, the economics of developing the mixed commercial zone are very difficult to meet. And, um, we have a duty to try to protect the farmland and to try to protect, you know, to keep population growth within the urban growth area. And I believe that, um, you know, staff has mentioned that we're right on track with sort of growth projections, but, um, there's no housing availability right now. And so there's nowhere for growth to happen. And, um, without, uh, the creation of new and additional housing, we're gonna stay in the same crisis that we're in. And I think, I, I, I would personally prefer to see it zoned, uh, at a higher density than R5. But it seems like our, uh, it seems like it may be with, outside of our scope to be able to recommend such a thing. But, uh, for those reasons, I, uh, would be in favor of this rezone. I think that, um, not allowing new residential development, uh, because of some calculation about mixed commercial land availability in the, in Cedar Woolley, uh, is misguided because, uh, there's a lot more, uh, mixed commercial land that's available here that's, uh, underutilized or just plain old not utilized right now. And, uh, the current need for, um, development is residential. And, uh, once again, these comments, uh, have no bearing on the water situation. Currently, uh, Mr. Ruby could build, uh, building 60 feet tall on this three acre mixed commercial zone, uh, if given the right setbacks. And as John said, uh, the lot coverage allowances are much higher in the mixed commercial zone. So, uh, the current rules that the city would be obligated to allow Mr. Ruby to develop under the current zoning, allow much greater bulk and much greater lot coverage than the R5 zone. And so, uh, by those metrics, the impact on the water situation would be much greater, uh, if developed under the current zoning regulations for this parcel. So, uh, those are my comments and, uh, that's it for now.
Anyone else? So I guess, I guess we're at a point where, you know, we can all agree to disagree or whatever it is. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Did I hear someone? Again, I'm at a total disadvantage here on staring at a screen. Eric, was that you? Joe, go ahead.
Um, just to clarify, I didn't hear, um, Mr. Coleman speak up after Mr. Johnson mentioned the finding new mixed commercial zoning. Is that a true statement, John, that we would have to find it in order to do this? Or is that waived in this case?
Well, there's no waiving it. It, what it does is it, if we, uh, eliminate mixed commercial zone and we don't create new mixed commercial zoning someplace else, then we're just missing out on the opportunity to provide land for mixed commercial hous, uh, mixed commercial uses in the future. Like, so, I mean, clearly right now, the, um, the need is, and the market is asking for residential development on land. But in 10 years, the, the case may be the complete opposite. You know, the housing market can shift and, uh, commercial could be the, uh, could be the, the flavor of the month. Um, and then we would be, uh, then people would be asking us for mixed commercial zoning. So our comprehensive plan is in place to, to look for 20 years of, of growth potential. So we, uh, we've done our projected population and employment growth. And we're looking at this in the long run. That's how the city often, that's how the city really needs to operate is, what is the long-term needs, not what is necessarily the most pressing issue at the moment? Now, we always try to accommodate the most pressing issue of the moment. And, you know, I think I've demonstrated in our, uh, in, in the packet that we do have enough land to accommodate our 20-year population growth, even at our increased trend. So, you know, it, the, the, the cities, the city is in, uh, in the position for 20 years of planning, not what's necessarily the, the trend right now, which clearly is, you know, a need for housing. But we don't know, you know, we follow the trends over long-term and we study our past, to see what, what needs are. And that's how we came up with this need for mixed commercial and residential.
John, I have a question.
Yeah.
So at the next comprehensive plan update cycle, all of these zones will be looked at again, correct? And the numbers recalculated, is that?
Correct. In the next year and a half, two years, we'll be, um, uh, working with the Skagit Council of Governments, you know, the, the other planning departments and the, the city, the county, all of the jurisdictions in the county, and looking at what our new population projections will be between, uh, 2025 and 2045. And in, uh, in 2025, we'll be, uh, June of 2025, we're, will be done with our land use capacity analysis and, uh, balancing the amount of, uh, zoning for our projected population growth, both residential and, and, uh, and job growth for the next planning horizon. So we're just a year and a half away from redoing, or a year away really, from starting the process of reexamining how much land we need to accommodate the next 20-year planning horizon between 2035, or 2025 and 2035. 20, 25 to 2045, excuse me.
And at that time, um, the, how, how does that work? Does, uh, is it, uh, areas in the UGA that are decided upon to be zoned, uh, differently? Or are zones changed to accommodate the percentages that are already there? Like, would it be possible for some of the commercial to be changed to mixed commercial? Or would that be imposed on residential?
So, um, what we'll do is a land analysis. So how much, uh, how much developable land is left and, you know, what's already developed? And so we actually go parcel by parcel throughout the existing city limits and urban growth area. We'll determine how much land is developed, how much land is undeveloped, and which, how much land has potential for redevelopment. And from that, we'll determine how much land is, uh, available to be developed between 2025 and 2045. And then we'll look at our population projections and our, uh, economic growth projections and determine how much land we need to accommodate each of those. So first we see where we're at, you know, with our land capacity analysis. And then we see what is our pop, our projected population and, and need. And then we put those together and we determine either we can expand our urban growth area to accommodate those, uh, population and employment growth needs, or we can change. to accommodate those population and employment growth needs, or we can change our city policies to accommodate it within our current urban growth boundaries. For example, we increase zoning, you know, the amount of land, amount of units allowed in certain residential zones, or change our balance of mixed commercial to, to allow more residential. Or, I mean, really, the door is wide open for what the planning commission and the city feel is best for the city of Seadruck Woolley. And that is the comprehensive planning part of what we do. And, you know, instead of, you know, well, we think, you know, at that time, we can look at individual pieces and see what's going on and where it would best be suited to accommodate each growth. It's, that's a comprehensive look at it. These rezon requests are much, I mean, they're simpler in one way because it's, you're just looking at one piece of land. But it's missing the whole component of what happens down the road with all the rest of the land that you need to accommodate your, your projections. So that's why I say, and I've said many times, if we change from mixed commercial to, say, R5, what happens is we get our balance out of SKU and now we're showing that we're losing mixed commercial land. And we don't, we're not proposing to create any more mixed commercial land right now. So, you know, a few years down the road, if the markets change, now we may not have the right commercial land available. And that's, that's the concern, and that's why this rezon, we don't feel is, conforms to the comprehensive plan and why staff has recommended to not approve the rezon. Does that answer your question?
I believe so. Thank you.
So does anybody else have any other questions for staff? I guess that's, I guess that's a no. So at this particular point, and Nikki, you can help me out with this. I believe I need to ask for a motion to either recommend to city council to rezon or to keep everything as it is, you know, status quo. What's, what's your guidance on that?
I agree with you. I, I would ask for a motion to either approve or, or deny the request to rezon.
Thank you.
To recommend approval, sorry, or deny.
So the floor is open. Would somebody like to recommend an approval or something else? Please, speak up someone. I can't do it.
I make a motion to not approve the recommendation to change the Ruby parcel from mixed commercial to R5.
I second.
Thank you. Okay, we got a second. We have a, now we have a vote. Okay? Vote to, to approve Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson's motion or to disapprove. To approve, put your hand up. Yes or no?
Aye.
Okay. So we have how many? Because I can't see.
Can we have a?
I'd recommend a roll call vote in this case. You've got commissioners that are in person and commissioners online.
Right, no, totally. So let's go to a roll call. Commissioner Fatizzi, is it yes to approve Commissioner Johnson's? Commissioner Freiburger?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson is a no.
Oh.
Commissioner, well, it's your own motion.
To approve the motion to recommend to deny. Yeah, it's a little confusing.
Yeah.
The motion is to recommend to deny.
Right.
Correct, yes. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Maddox?
No.
Commissioner Frenette?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we have four to one.
Five, five to one.
Five to one?
Including, you said no yourself, right? You said to recommend yourself, right?
I did, that's correct, yeah. I, I agreed with Commissioner Johnson.
So staff, staff recognizes the motion of, a motion to not rezon the, the rezon property has passed, has passed five to one, which is, the result is, meaning that the planning commission is not recommending approval of the rezon.
That's correct. But I also want to throw this out there as well. I mean, I'm hearing the same thing from different people about taking a look at our mixed commercial code to begin with, and I think that should be on the table as well. We want people to be successful at the end of the day. So if there's something going on in our code that just isn't working out, let's have that discussion if we have about five other things we need to, we need to talk about. So I'm going to move on to the next, go ahead, I'm sorry. John, am I good? Or Nikki, am I good?
You're good.
Okay. So we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be, by the way, hang on, the next rezon matter. I'm sorry, people, it's like, kind of different, different kind of day for me right now. So we're going to move on to the, can somebody help me out here? We're looking at.
So right now, we're moving on to the second public hearing, which is rezon request number 2021-038, which is proposed by Bucko.
That's correct, yes. Like I said, John, I'm, I'm working on different screens here. It would be the Bucko rezon. Exactly. RZ 2021-038, Bucko rezon. So I think the Bucko sisters, they get the first shot at this.
So according to our procedures, Joe, that we discussed earlier, the rules of procedure are, so you just introduced the proposal. So next is staff presentation, and then following staff presentation, the proponent will have their option to, their opportunity to speak. And then after that, the chair will open the public hearing, at which time the members of the public get to speak. And then the chair will close the public hearing, and the planning commission will have the opportunity to deliberate.
Thank you. Anyway, here you go.
Not sure if this is a point of order, point of inquiry, or what, but according to the rules of procedures, section Code of Ethics and decorum, rule four, because I have what I believe to be a reasonable conflict of interest with this matter, I am going to recuse myself. And I guess I have to leave the chamber as well.
Commissioner Johnson, thank you. You are recused. So Platter Coleman, you have the floor.
All right. So one of the first things I'd like to do is point out that we received a couple of items related to this issue. So the applicant submitted a packet to the planning commission, and that has been provided to the planning commission members in the building. It is on their dais and in front of them. And it has been emailed to the, all of the planning commissions. So the planning commission members attending remotely via Zoom right now also have this in front of them on their email. In addition to that, we also received a letter from BYK Construction giving their perspective on this proposal. And that as well has been provided to the planning commission at their dais, as well as emailed to the planning commission members. So those attending remotely also have these materials. So I'll give a brief presentation on this proposal. This is the second public hearing that we've had on this proposal. And prior to that, we also had a regular meeting that wasn't an official public hearing, at which point, at which meeting, the applicant also had the opportunity to present their information. So this is the third time that this, the planning commission has had the opportunity to review this. Similarly to the previous project, this is a request to change zoning of a property from mixed commercial. However, this one is a request to change the zoning to residential 15, which is the high-density zoning for the city of Seadruck Woolley. It provides for 15 units per acre in the, in the R15 zone. So it's primarily an apartment zoning. As, as you can see in the memo, this property is located north of Cook Road. It has a 40-foot panhandle to the properties, and it goes roughly 300 feet behind the properties that front on Cook Road, and then this property is behind those. When this property was zoned to mixed commercial, the idea was to provide a larger area of mixed commercial zone to accommodate a larger commercial development, putting this property together with the properties that front Cook Road. Since that time, there's currently a development that would be bringing a road into this property that would also provide access to this commercial land, which staff has presented in the past saying that this opens this property up for more public access and, again, good commercial frontage. Similarly to the previous project that we just finished discussing, staff has concerns about giving up mixed commercial land without creating mixed commercial land someplace else. I believe I've already belabored the point of if we lose our mixed commercial land, how do we accommodate our commercial growth in the future? We've heard, you know, some people say, well, you know, there's plenty of mixed commercial land in Seadruck Woolley that, you know, there is currently, but not if we give, start turning over mixed commercial land to residential uses. Because I have already presented this topic twice, and I'm not seeing any new members that haven't been to the presentation on this issue, I'm going to forego a lengthy discussion that staff presented in our staff report. So I'll just cut to our recommendation and conclusions. There, we're still concerned that losing the mixed commercial land will skew the balance of necessary residential and commercial land within the urban growth area. This will be providing more residential land, several more units than we, than we've justified in our comprehensive plan. And losing commercial land, as I've stated numerous times now, is also frustrating to our comprehensive plan. I think that's all I have for now. I'd like to, you know, if there's any, any presentations that come up, and if there's questions that you have for staff, or if there's anything that you want clarification from, I'll, I'll leave it at that. But staff does not recommend approval of the rezon from the 5.2 acres from mixed commercial to residential 15.
John, thank you, and totally appreciate all the work you guys are doing. So we're going to open up the floor, and I believe this is correct, Nikki, right, for the applicant now to have a say, and they'll open up to the public thereafter. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Ms. Bucko, hi.
Hi. So I'm actually going to go ahead and go first. Again, if we were there in person, I think Sarah and I would be standing up at the podium together, but this is, this is.
I got it.
So I am, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and start off. My name is Laura Bucko. I live at 41 Pacific Mist, Newport Coast, California. I will go ahead and, and start off just by saying, you know, I did bring this up last time, and I just want to touch on it briefly again. In our, in our almost two years of working on this development project that we are working on, aside from this project, we do recognize the hours of, you know, volunteer work that go into the planning committee and doing things like the comprehensive plan. So in no way, shape, or form, I do just want to highlight on the fact that we don't think at, you know, when you guys sat and did this comprehensive plan, that, that maybe that was the, the best decision for this property and some of these parcels at that time. But, you know, things do change. I own a, and very quickly, I own a property in Seadruck Woolley, a single-family home that six months ago I got a comp on for, you know, $385, and I just did a comp on that same house, not even six months later, and it's sitting at $450. So I think that the, the problem of affordability is, is a very big present issue right now, and we've talked about that. But, so again, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to present to you guys. I am going to kind of refer to the packet that we sent over. I do want to say that we are coming at this request with a lot of thought and a lot of purpose and pure intention in changing this zone. We think that it's the highest and the best use for the surrounding properties, as well as the city of Seadruck Woolley as a whole. The purpose of this goal is to add that much-needed affordable housing to Seadruck Woolley. And I think one of the only ways to do that, that we're seeing, we're seeing these single-family homes that people are purchasing. And then, you know, like I said, six months later, to have a 50,000% increase on the value of that home, single-family homes might not be the way to solve this affordability issue. So that's why we're asking for the R15 zoning, because we think that it allows that. It also does provide us a very desirable transition from our single-family home development that we have to the north and the mixed commercial parcels that border and actually do touch Cook Road. So we do believe that that R15 zone could provide that desirable transition, not just for that single-family home, but for those commercial properties that will be touching it. Because, you know, how desirable is it going to be for either a local business or, say, a Starbucks or something like that to come in, touching Cook Road, have town, townhomes or garden-style apartments, and then a single-family development behind it? And if you guys look at the image that we provided, we are showing kind of what that transition would look like, where you would have the commercial property, then you have your little bit higher-density townhomes or garden-style apartments, and then you have your single-family, and it just flows nicely. One thing I also wanted to bring up was, right now, how it fits. It is mixed commercial zoning. We can put, you know, we can put residential there as well. And honestly, the mixed zoning commercial would, or the mixed commercial zoning would be more lucrative to us. We think if any, if we would have sold this property and let any other developer come in, that's probably what they would be utilizing. But this is a legacy project for our grandfather, and we did grow up in this community, and we want to be proud of this project. And we think that taking the less lucrative project and the thing that's better for the community is the route that we want to go. So planning has offered in our developers' agreement to possibly support us on a UVM U overlay, which would increase the density, again, making it even more profitable for us. And again, that's not the route that we're asking to go. We want to do what's going to be better for the community in this scenario. So going to, I believe that there was a question on page two on the comments about the 2009 ask of the rezon of the previous owner. I just mainly want to point out the fact that we weren't the previous owner. So I don't, even though the previous owner does have the same last name as us, we aren't the previous owner, and so we just don't really see the relevance in that specific comment. Moving on to the next comment, talking about the area, that mixed commercial area not being very deep, if you were to take away this mixed commercial designation behind it. We do own that parcel behind it that we're asking for the rezon on, and without that parcel ever being sold to another developer to create this larger commercial space that is desired there, possibly by the planning committee. is desired there, possibly by the planning committee, I don't think that that could ever happen unless we sold our property. And knowing what we have going on with our single-family development, we probably are never going to want to put commercial space up against our single-family homes. Again, for purpose of the community and the people who are going to be living alongside that. I believe Paul, in the last meeting, touched on the fact that he's never had a buyer say that they wish that they had a grocery store in their backyard. So we did look at, you know, with, with actual developers, what this would look like to have a commercial space in the area that's already there, saying that 300 feet is not a good enough depth. We've kind of penciled out actually how this would look with parking and landscape, and it looks like we could have a really, really nice little strip mall there. You know, maybe it's not the big box that you were looking for, but I could see a lot of really great, more local businesses being able to utilize this area here. And I believe somebody else on the last meeting also touched on the fact that we, a lot of people don't want to see necessarily huge, big box going in on Cook Road. Maybe we can keep that to I-5, maybe Highway 20, and keep Cook Road in this transitional area, you know, a little, a little more like this, as we displayed in the picture. The next comment that I wanted to address was here again, where it's just talking about the arterial road. Again, I want to point out that when we submitted this rezone request, the arterial road was never part of that plan. We worked really hard with the city of Seidra Wully to get our project approved and to also help facilitate this arterial road that's really going to help with the traffic issue in Seidra Wully. So while this is going to bring some frontage to that parcel, again, it's just not going to be the desirable place for, you know, a commercial property. I think that Rob Janiky even touched on, this is actually going into the next comment, so I apologize. Next comment is talking, you know, I think it's been kind of the repeated thing for this whole meeting, taking away mixed commercial means you have to allocate it somewhere else. I do understand what you guys are talking about. You guys have to look at the bigger picture, and you need to make sure that there's going to be that commercial space there. I personally think that the people have to be able to come first before you're going to want to have, you know, big box or, or more commercial space. COVID also changed a lot of things, and people do a lot of different stuff online now. So, you know, I do think supporting our local businesses and, and some, you know, things like Starbucks and things like that coming to Seidra Wully are super awesome. But we had Rob Janiky on the last, on the last meeting here, and he openly stated that he is the largest owner of mixed commercial and commercial property in the city of Seidra Wully, and that it's been sitting vacant for 21 years. So I think that we can look at some feedback from not just a community member, but an active developer in our community, and be like, okay, so let's address the issue here, being that there is a housing shortage. So all these people that want to live in Seidra Wully can't. And so those people are going to go find other places to live and are not going to be supporting our commercial and economic growth in Seidra Wully. So I think changing something like this to R15, allowing people to come in and have that entry-level pricing that we've been talking about. City of Seidra Wully's median age is 33 years old, with 50% of the population being from the ages of 19 to 35. That's your first-time buyers, and they can't afford to buy a house that was built in 1970, like my home, that's $450,000 and needs some work. So we're trying to solve that, invite people into our community, then grow the commercial space, which I think when we need it, we can probably call Rob Janiky and get some of it from him. That kind of concludes my part. On this, you know, we do talk about the R15, you know, that there already is a lot in Seidra Wully. We did dive a little deeper into that, and while there is designated R15s in Seidra Wully, there is not a lot that's actually develop, developable. So as you can see in the exhibit, I don't, just for time's sake, I probably don't need to go through each individual one, but each of them have, you know, an acre here, an acre here, have been halfway developed, and maybe have a little section that's not developed. So really, the, the area where R15 could actually be developed, where townhomes and garden-style apartments could actually be put in, is extremely limited. So while I understand that we need the mixed commercial, I think we have it. We need entry-level housing. We don't have it, and that's really what we're trying to do here. It's not the lucrative move, it's simply the problem at hand and finding the solution for that. And then I think Sarah's going to finish off over here for you guys.
Yeah, hi, guys. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to just kind of present and, and just talk regarding these comments. I won't go through each one of these exhibits either. You have them in front of you. You can kind of just see here, you know, these are all of the existing R15 zone land that we have in the city of Seidra Wully. You can see, when you're going through the exhibits, that most of them are fully developed. And so this is really, if you go through each one, this is really the supply of multifamily housing that we have in Seidra Wully. And, you know, it's really, it's really not a lot. And as noted above, you know, kind of removing this, you know, 5.2 acres of land is, is only removing 1.9% of the currently zoned mixed commercial land that we have available in the city. So, you know, there's definitely a lot of existing commercial space available for, for lease in the city of Seidra Wully and, you know, waiting to be built. Down the road, you guys know that right next to this parcel is, there's two big UVMU projects going in, being built. And that's over 20,000 square feet of new commercial, you know, retail space. So there's a lot, you know, there's a lot coming in really, really close to this parcel. And, you know, we really believe that that is going to provide the community with all of the, you know, commercial space that, you know, they need. And, you know, I hope that they will, it will all get filled. I, I think that I'm definitely hearing a lot from the planning commission and, and staff about a concern of the commercial space. You know, if we take away this parcel of mixed commercial, then, oh, what are we going to do with it? Where are we going to put it? There's nowhere to put it. And I feel like there's a lot of emphasis going into this concern about commercial space, and it's a little bit hard to hear because we are in the middle of a huge housing crisis. You know, Skagit County has been number one in the state of Washington for lack of vacancies. We're at 0.2% vacancies for rental units. And we've been number one for the past three years, according to the University of Washington Center for Research, Real Estate Research. So, you know, not only are we 0% number one in the state for vacancies for, for rental housing, you know, there's an extreme affordability issue. According to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, two out of five households in Skagit County couldn't afford the home that they occupied. You know, in 2019, the census showed that the median household income in Seidra Wully was $60,000. So, you know, that would mean that an affordable mortgage or rent payment would be $1,500 a month. And I think that we all know what rents are going for. You know, in August, the median home price in Seidra Wully was $500,000. That's a mortgage payment for a lot more than $1,500 a month. So we're suffering this huge housing crisis, and I feel like we're prioritizing commercial space over housing. And not just any housing. We know that there are single-family homes going in. We know that, you know, the project that we have proposed is, you know, 6,000 to 9,000 square-foot lots. These are larger homes. But we really haven't allowed this type of housing, where it's the multifamily housing. So it's a different product than, than what is going in via the UVMU's. You know, there are smaller apartments above retail space. We're really hoping to provide more of a courtyard-style lockup apartment or townhome, where, you know, people can still have a little bit of a yard, but we're going to bring the prices down. So moving on, the current R15 zones and how they're developed, and the lack of developable property that's, that's vacant in the R15 zones, 78 units would really be crucial. That's kind of what we could, we've calculated that we could put in if we get the R15 zone, 78 units. We really, doing the mixed commercial, we could, you know, we could hit that mark as well. We could get this, you know, same amount of units, and we could probably get a little bit more, because we're talking about eight units per building, you know, getting roughly two buildings per acre would be 16 units per acre. So that would be around 83 units for the full 5.21 acres. So I think that, you know, it's, we really just want to hit that this is not going to bring, changing the zoning to R15 doesn't necessarily make it so that we're bringing more popul, you know, we're not increasing the population from what we would be with the, with the mixed commercial zoning. We could still kind of hit that density that we're talking about. It's just, we're talking about a different, a different product. And I know last time, or maybe it was on our first meeting where we kind of talked about, I use the term "middle housing" a lot, and, you know, I kept getting asked, you know, what is middle housing? What, what does that mean, middle housing? What are you talking about? And really, middle housing is just a range of house-scale buildings with multiple units that kind of bridge the gap between the single-family homes that we have, and then the more intense, higher-density multifamily, like what we see in the UVMU and, and via, you know, apartments above commercial space. We've, we're so happy that those are going in, the UVMU's, and we think that they're definitely needed, but we're missing this whole range of housing, housing supply, and that's, and that's the middle housing. And I know I said this last time as well, but, you know, that there's just a flurry of Growth Management Act bills going through the Senate right now to try to get more housing in via these mandatory zoning changes allowing for this type of housing. Mandatory middle housing was actually on the agenda, and they, it got watered down to an incentive program first, giving money to municipalities via grants that implement these zones, an attempt to give the cities the right thing to do before they come in. And, you know, they didn't want to make it mandatory. They, they, they said, let's, you know, let's give them incentives to kind of do the right thing, and I, and I think, I think that local cities will understand what a housing crisis we're in and how these specific types of middle housing are, are really necessary. And then, you know, if, we'll see, you know, a lot more got added to the, to, to the docket this year. I just think it's really important to note that this housing crisis existed before the pandemic, but the pandemic has definitely made it far more acute and kind of impossible to ignore. So I really just think that now's the time to really let our actions reflect the urgency of this crisis. We, you know, we, we don't have a, we don't have a commercial retail space crisis. We really have a housing crisis, and I just, the magnitude of our shortage requires more action. So that's, you know, what I have. Thank you so much for hearing us out, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about, about our presentation.
Thank you. So I'm going to open this up to the publics if we're, if we're done. And like I said, I'm not in Town Hall right now. John, do we have anybody in the audience, or do we have anybody online that would like to have a say on this?
Do you want to speak?
Talk to me.
There's, 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 there's no, there's nobody in the audience here that's here to speak on this issue.
Okay. Do we have anybody else online that would like to opine on, on this proposal?
BYK Construction, 702 Metcalf Street. Thanks, Laura and Sarah. We, Paul and I are actually working with Laura and Sarah, kind of helping them out. We are hoping to be involved in, in their single-family project. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I support the rezone here. You know, we, as developers, we've talked a lot about the mixed commercial zoning and how hard it is to develop, and, you know, if this piece doesn't get rezoned, it's, it's going to sit for however many years it sits for, until either the zoning gets changed or the, the code for the mixed commercial gets changed. I want to speak a little bit about transitional zoning. Laura touched on it a little bit, but I think it's crucial to have a good transition from, from single-family homes to commercial. And I think the R15 with, like Sarah said, a different product than kind of the high-rise apartments, more of a, a family apartment environment for, you know, entry-level families and, and people that don't want to be in the, in the high-rise but can't afford a, a Basically, you know, in, in closing, it's, in my comments, closing, you know, what's, what's more important to the planning commission? Is it, is it holding on to commercial real estate that's not going to get developed? Or is it addressing, you know, a housing crisis that we're in? And I hope you guys all took time to read through the presentation. I feel like Laura and Sarah wanted to try to be mindful of your time and, and tried to kind of hit on the points, and there is a lot of information in that presentation that, that I think is important and actual data that we, you know, actually researched on. So I support the rezone, and with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Tim. Do we have anyone else, either online or in person, that would like to comment before I turn this over to the, the planning commission? I'll take that as a no. So anyway, the floor is open for everyone. Like I said, I can't see anybody, so feel free to jump in.
So this is John.
I'm really sorry. I did just want to ask, by the way, too, because normally it does say that the meeting is recording. Is this one not recording today?
I'm sorry?
It's, it's being recorded.
Okay, I was just curious.
Do you have anything else to say? Are we good?
Right, Bill, it's being recorded.
Okay.
I was just asking.
Okay, no worries. So somebody jump on in. Joe Fournette, since I'm staring at you on the screen, why don't you hop in first?
So this, this is John, real quick, I want to- So, this is John. Real quick, I want to point out that it is 8:22, and we're closing the public hearing portion.
Okay. We are closing the public hearing portion at 8:22. Thank you, by the way. You got to back me up. Anyway, so, on to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Frenette, how about we start with you? Any comments? You're on mute, Joe. We can't hear you.
Wonder how that happened. Sorry.
There you go. There you go. All good.
All right. What I was saying was I'll make it simple. Great presentation. And in this particular case, I think it's warranted to make the change in this particular area.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Maddox?
I'm, I'll go on record saying I'm in favor of this rezone request. I believe the zoning makes sense in the location where it's at. I am, as you all know, highly sympathetic to the need for additional housing within the urban growth area and skeptical that our comprehensive plan projections from 20 years ago are still relevant in regards to the need for maintaining non-viable mixed commercial zoning. So, anyway, I'm in favor of this. No further comments.
So, I want to throw this out there. I mean, we're putting in all this density with people, like housing. And this isn't R-15. Listen, there's better zones than R-15, in my opinion, for what you're trying to accomplish here. So, why R-15? I mean, your 5, R7s, at 5 acres, you could PDR it, you could do what you're looking to do. So, my confusion is putting in that kind of density in an already dense kind of place. I mean, R-15 is literally right next door. And I don't believe you're correct on 20,000 square feet in the UVMU. John, did 20,000? That's a whole lot of space. And I don't think we're...
Between the two of them?
I'm asking, Peter Coleman. Our UVMU, we have two projects right now. And I heard 20,000 square feet of commercial space? I don't believe that's correct.
I do not have those project files in front of me, and I do not recall the specific statistics for that. So, I can't comment on that.
I know what 20,000 square feet looks like. And looking at both of those footprints, I don't think we have.
So, you know, we do have the ability, while we're discussing, since Tim's still here, he actually is doing one of those projects. So, he can probably tell us specifically how much commercial space is, if he's still there.
Tim, have at it. We're all ears.
Yeah. Tim Woodmancy, BYK Construction. Yeah. So, our building is not actually under construction yet. We are, we've been through the CEPA process and have submitted for permits and actually received comments back and resubmitted for permits. And our building is, the ground floor consists of 10,500 square feet of new commercial storefront space and also consists of around, somewhere in the mid-20s of...
On the residential side.
Ground-level parking on the first floor. And then there's three levels of apartments above that that consists of 67 total residential units above it.
And I think the Janicki project was around 12,000. So, 12,000 plus 10,500 is over 20,000 square feet of commercial space.
It stands to reason that it's somewhere in the ballpark of 20,000. Yeah. I would not dispute that.
So, the issue at hand here is going to, it's our highest-density zone for apartments. So, what I'm saying is I think there's other options here to accomplish what you're looking to do. So, anyway, Commissioner Penno, I'm just going around the table here because, again, I can't see anybody.
Yes, Joe. Thanks. I want to thank you guys for your presentation. It was really well thought out, and I enjoyed listening to it. I'm all for affordable housing. I always have been. What worries me is it actually being affordable. I mean, some people say affordable. What is affordable? So, I'm a big proponent of that. Affordable rent, I think you're going to have a bigger issue with than being able to sell a house to someone. So, all of these apartments, I'm not thrilled with. The density bothers me. We've got, how many schools, we'll need more schooling. And we'll need some more of that mixed commercial space to put the little sandwich shops and coffee stands and nail salons these people need to go to. And I really do enjoy your proposal, and you've really well thought it out. And I appreciate what you've brought to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Freiburger.
Well, first, I want to say thank you for your presentation. And thanks for addressing the middle housing question in more detail from the previous meeting. That was informative. I do share staff's concern with the percentages of the mixed commercial and where else we're going to put that. I know that can be revisited. But that is something that I don't think can be done quickly and easily. So, that's kind of where I'm approaching this from. And that's all I had.
You know, I get everybody's concern and where different people want different directions to go. So, I believe that we don't have to make that decision tonight. Okay? It sounds like this is something that should be on the table to discuss more. It's getting late. And how many acres, Tim, are you still here? Tim?
Yeah, I'm still here.
How many acres are we talking about right next door that, I think it's an R7 or R5 zone, right next door? We're looking at like 70 acres or something like that? What's the other parcels? Sorry, you guys would know.
So, yeah, you can direct those kind of questions to staff. That's not Tim's project. So, what is your question specifically?
So, how many acres do we have on the side of that?
On the side of what?
Right next to this 5 acres. I believe they have a proposal in for like 70-plus single-family houses? Am I off or?
Yeah. I think Sarah or Laura can address that succinctly.
Okay. So, we're looking at 70-plus houses in one place, and now an R-15 to do a higher density. You know, I think we need to talk about it a little bit more because, because here's the thing, hang on a second.
We do, yeah. Did you ask about how many units?
Please let me speak?
Oh, sorry. I thought you asked a question about how many units we were...
I think John already answered that. So, but he did say that, and I apologize. So, we're looking for 70-plus houses on top of now our highest-density of apartments. Okay? This isn't, the proposal here isn't for single-family housing. The proposal here is for more apartments on top of more apartments that are literally right across the street. So, that's my concern. And Commissioner Penno said this earlier. So, how are you going to provide services for all these people when we put in all this high-density? And that's my concern. Okay? And that's just me. Okay? There's a whole bunch of different people here that have a say as well. So...
Can I comment on that?
Can I just, you said something, you said that we are going to be putting in apartments and it's the highest-density apartments that are allowed in the city of Sedroly. And I just want to correct that. The multifamily zone, it does not say that we have to put in apartments. We can put in townhomes. We can put in, you know, we can put in townhomes. We don't have to put in apartments. We can put in townhomes.
But here on the rezone, you could also sell that property to somebody else. So, we're looking at a bigger picture here. Okay?
And it's also not the highest-density.
I'm not done. And we've been burned on this before, where you get certain kind of thing going in, and all of a sudden, somebody does something a little bit different. So, when you're doing rezones, okay, it's just a bigger picture from what the city's perspective is. And when people are telling me that, oh, well, gee, you know, commercial doesn't matter today, well, I'll tell you right now, two years from now, it might. And as a commercial real estate broker, I kind of know this stuff. Okay? So, what's happening today doesn't necessarily, it's not going to mean what it might be five years from now. So, anyway, unless someone has a proposal right now to make a motion to...
Silas, did you want to speak? Did you have something you wanted to say?
I'm sorry?
I think Silas had something he wanted to say.
Well, I just wanted to say that part of this proposal, as I understand it, is to provide some transitional zoning here between the R7 and the mixed commercial so that you don't end up with a situation where you have a large mixed commercial development backing up directly to an R7 zone. And in that context, I think the high zoning makes a lot of sense. The R-15 zone makes a lot of sense in this area. And I also want to just comment that within the city and the urban growth area, we are best positioned to provide the additional service for the services that are necessary for to accommodate greater population growth. This growth is going to happen in this region regardless of whether we get ahead of it or not. And nobody, well, there might be some people, but the general consensus in this, in Skagit County, is that we want to preserve farmland, and we want to keep the, you know, wild spaces wild. And if we don't make substantive moves to accommodate increased growth within Sedroly and within the other municipalities around here, that development is going to go out into the farmland, whether we like it or not. And so, we have, you know, municipal services available here and the infrastructure with which to accommodate growth. And having higher density reduces unit costs. That's just how it goes. Economics is supply and demand. If you can increase the supply, the prices are going to go down. And so, and from a development perspective, if you can put 15 units per acre, the unit cost is going to be substantially lower than if you can put seven units per acre or five units per acre. And so, Commissioner Penno's comment about affordability is well-taken, but affordability is not really the right way to talk about it because what's affordable to one person is not affordable to another. You know, it's very subjective. But the reality is, is that higher-density development is less costly per unit. And that's ultimately what it comes down to. And we need more options for different levels and styles of housing within the city here. So, that's it for now.
So, point well taken. But the great thing is, we don't get to make that call, right? It's the mayor and council that gets to make that call.
I think I'd be ready to vote tonight. Would you be ready to vote, Danielle?
Yes.
I don't think we need to extend this any longer, Joe. I'm going to make a motion to recommend that we deny the rezone.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
I will second that.
Okay. So, we have a second to deny the rezone. Will we take a vote now? In favor of denying the rezone, raise your hand.
Can we do a roll call vote so we can see, so we can hear?
We can. John, again, I'm out of my box here because I'm working off of a screen. Commissioner Freiburger, deny, yes or no?
Yay.
So, that's a yes to deny.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Fatizi, that's a yes. Commissioner Penno?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Maddox?
No.
Okay. We got one no. Commissioner Frenette?
No.
So, that's two no's, and I think we have four yeses. Is that correct?
It's three, three to two.
Three to two.
We have a planning commissioner who recused himself.
Okay. So, we're not going to pass it up the chain, but it doesn't mean that this is a dead action. But we're just not going to take any action on it right now.
So, the next step is, the next step is, I will, the staff will create a staff report. We'll create a findings of fact and recommendation, including the procedural history and the discussion topics, and the vote count, which is three votes to deny the rezone request and two votes to approve. So, the Planning Commission, three to two, has recommended to deny, recommended that the city council deny the rezone request. And so, that will be forwarded to the city council for their review at a future city council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So, as I go down the agenda items here, we have Planning Commission discussion items. We have nothing. And I would like to adjourn the meeting right now. Well, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second, I'll second that.
We got a second to the motion to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned at 8:40 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's really good to see you.
Yeah. It was interesting.
How did I do this all these years?
I just wanted, yeah, to make sure that, and somebody else was right.
Yeah, because I have to quit because I went through gas.
Can I ask you a personal question?